Go ahead and call the media order at six thirty-one. Our agenda, I like, I love the agenda item number two. Number one is just me saying, calling the media order. It's like getting something done right off the bat. So agenda number two is public comments. So we've got fifteen minutes. If there's anybody that wants to say anything, come right up. All right, seeing no public comments? Good. All right, we'll move on to number three, agenda review. Anything to add, correct?
Thanks for the reminder. We have two consent items and then we do need non-public under small letter C.
All right, then we'll move on to number four, minutes of previous meetings. We've got September sixth and September twentieth. Take them together or apart if people have corrections, whatever you guys like. Well, that's because, hold on, that's because I'm looking at the wrong agenda. That's why.
I didn't do it all the way. I'll make a motion to approve October fourth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Second.
Okay, discussions? Can you give us a synopsis so that we can?
Non-substantive typos? I'll amend my motion to approve the ten for twenty twenty-two minutes as corrected.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, aye. Any opposed? Or abstentions? All right, and ten eighteen?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Proposed trust items, it says seven thousand dollars vehicle replacement. It says based off of couple of years. Is that passed? That is, it isn't clear. Looking this way. Just look at.
So the seven thousand dollars is based off of four thousand dollars allocated for the pickup truck and three thousand allocated for the school district van. And that's based off of a thirty thousand dollar allotment for the van and a forty thousand dollar allotment for the truck at the time. I think maybe what was trying to be said is we probably will have to bump that up in the years to come due to the times we're in.
Thanks.
In talking about school building capital reserve fund. It says the big spike is really the track. You're talking about the P A track. Correct? It was those two.
I'll amend the motion to approve the ten eighteen minutes as corrected.
Second.
Hey, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And I'm abstentions, Andy. Okay, so we will move on to number five, board reports. We don't have a student senate rep tonight. Oh, fantastic.
So our student senate representative will be Jake DeMers. He's a junior. Regretfully couldn't make it tonight. He is supporting the Pembroke girls soccer team at their semifinal game. Some of the updates he wanted me to share. The senate is currently doing a constitution review and revisions. Members of the senate have been revising the constitution in its entirety. By doing so, the students are trying to ensure that each and every article is written clearly. The senate officers made comments that highlighted phrases within particular articles. These phrases were either vaguely explained or didn't necessarily make sense. Then they are following that up with revising those highlighted articles with guidance from the officers. They also have four committees. Mr. P A, which some of you may remember from a number of years ago. Turkey decorations, winter spirit week, and faculty skit. So, Mr. P A, we have some senators that are trying to work on finding a solution to the historical Pembroke Academy agent. And the senators are trying to hold an event that preserves P A traditions that is inclusive towards all. I'll give you more feedback on that when we get a little bit more information. Turkey decorations, we have some senators that are planning an easy and efficient way to conduct the process of hanging fall decorations. Traditionally, the senate hangs turkeys in fall leaf cutouts throughout the school's main entrance. Each turkey or leaf features a name of a student at the school. The name of every single student that attends P A is included. They also did that at the start of the year with Spartan heads. And then in the spring, they do that with flowers. Winter spirit week, the, we have some chosen senators that are brainstorming potential ideas for winter spirit days. The chosen spirit days will be utilized during the winter season prior to any important events. And the faculty skit, we have some senators that are planning a faculty skit. They have already put together a list of faculty members that may be interested in taking on roles and they are currently working on a plot line. The potential date for the skit is the twenty-second of March, but because of some variables, it is still undecided. Lot of variables. We'll see.
Cool, thank you, and thanks to Jake for preparing that. Sure thing.
We applaud the senate for working on the inclusivity associated with the historical vestiges of Mr. P A. I think that's a great endeavor.
Maybe if we can clear up Mr. Coffin, we could just get live turkeys?
We're gonna have to have a discussion.
All right, any other comments about that? All right, we'll move on to Mr. Coffin.
Good evening. Officially signed off on the library project, so I know it kind of dragged on for quite a bit. But as you can see, it's come out pretty nice. So thank you to everybody that was involved, specifically the librarian Chrissy Smith and Julie Quiznell, who's the I T integrator here at P. We recently completed our two-year inspection of our boiler room, specifically our boilers with Travelers Insurance, who is the sub for Primex. They come and inspect our boilers every two years. You're starting to hear often these, these companies, they just show up. We open the door, we show them what we got. So all went well on our boiler inspections. We're good for the next two years, except for the gas boilers here at Pembroke Academy, which we did not re-up because we're very close to starting that Honeywell project. So that did not make sense to re-up those for the next two years. And then lastly, we have had two walkthroughs at the Hill School with L B A. We've had the site engineers, et cetera, on, in the building and on the premises to check out everything. So they're hard at work. We met with them tonight for our second Hill School committee and they're busy putting everything together for us.
Thank you very much, questions for Josh? Okay, we'll move on to principals and I suppose we can start with Ms. Gary this time.
Hello, okay. So we're kind of, we're moving along right now. We had a lot of the same things that we're working on right now as far as our academics and having, working through our intervention cycles and getting those up and running with some of the providers that we've been able to bring into the building through the cares or the S R funds, which has been really great. We're very happy that we have them in the building and we have some great people. We had our, another one of our assemblies on Friday and those are always very fun. There's a lot of dancing. The kids came in with their costumes and it was just, it was a great time. It's a chance for the, for the staff and the kids to get together and have fun and just dance. And then it kind of will radiate for the rest of the month and then we're ready for another one. So I don't know what they're gonna come up with next month. It's always exciting to see. But we do have a team that will meet to put that together, so I'm very thankful for that. The, we just, one of the things that we're working on in the building is handwriting without tears, which is a program to address specifically handwriting instruction K four. That's been, that's something that our staff went training on, on our last P D day. And then we're about ready to follow up with that work in our faculty meetings to look at data and we collect that, so they do screeners and look at how the students are progressing. I know it sounds like it's handwriting, but it's really fine motor skills. And because of COVID and the way things are with kiddos, a lot of them are on screens and technology. It's something that we really need to kind of really look at with explicit instruction. So that's been one of the initiatives this year as far as that, along with our interventions. But other than that, the kids are hard at work and the staff is hard at work. So every day it's definitely interesting. The day after Halloween, it was fun today. We had a lot of candy coming in the building, but the kids had a good time yesterday. So I guess we'll see what tomorrow brings.
Thanks. Questions about Hill?
I'm, I read the very last line of the very last reminder about all of the rules associated with wearing the costumes on Friday. And I was so excited about it because it basically said like, if everybody does good and follows the rules, we hope to make this an annual tradition. And I hope everybody did because I couldn't tell you how excited I am as a parent to have the return of my child being able to wear a Halloween costume to school. You know, the absence of that has really been kind of a, a loss of fun for children at school. So way to go.
They did phenomenal. I was so proud of all the kiddos and I mean, they just, they, I think they were excited. They came in and they followed it and we really were trying to also make, you know, whoever didn't want to, it was optional. So we had kids that weren't in it, just making it whoever wanted to be a part of it, but they did great. I was really proud of them.
Fantastic. All right, Mr. Marston? And you can be as brief or long as you want.
How much time do you get? Some of the big news at Three Rivers obviously is a new office staff change. Janice Bonner, who'd been with us for nineteen years, kind of broke in with me, you know, a few years ago. And she has taken another job. And with her, she took a tremendous amount of history and how to do things. However, Heather Fedema, who's been our, of front of the office, receptionist and special ed secretary, has now moved into her position as office manager. And we have spent the last two or three weeks with a lot of training and, but Heather's already off to a great start. We've added Jackie Gagnon, who was a pair at, at Hill School as to be the front of the, of the joint. And, you know, she was able to come down and spend some time with us. Thank God, because it's in the off, you don't realize how much it is until you start breaking it down. And so she's off and running and we've had two good days of relatively smooth. Yesterday was a little, oh my God, what's going on? But today was right back to normal, so hopefully nobody will feel that. Cross-country boys were runners up in their league and the girls were champions. The state meet, the girls, I believe, play second, which is pretty unbelievable. Cause there is, I forget, like twenty-nine teams that go and something like that, it's crazy. And the boys, I think, hit ninth. I'm doing that from memory, so apologize. Boys soccer team just played and won and they play a championship this Thursday, hopefully right out here at P A. A girls team just lost in a shootout. So that was kind of a bitter pill, but they also had a great season. We also are looking at a lot of data right now. A lot of data is coming in from classrooms, the star assessment and those things. We're trying to really start looking at that and seeing, you know, which way we need to go with our data. I'll bring you more of that stuff later on, but I think it's important that we really start after, we really gotta look more than ever at what is the data telling us? And it's certainly been interesting first blush. Just for your own information, we've had thirty-four new students this year and we've had ten leave. So we're still up twenty-five. We did have a large class leave last year and a little bit smaller come in, but we have more students right now than we did at the end of last year. Seventh grade seems to be continually be the place that kind of gets hit. I think we've got, we're up to eleven or twelve just in seventh grade, new students. I'm not quite sure, the second year in a row, maybe third year in a row that we've been, I'm not, I've got my theories on that, but anyway. Student council, we had our first dance Friday night. It was well-attended and it was a middle school dance. So it was kind of, kind of cool to see that happen again. I've seen a few in my day and nothing changed. Not even the music. It's like, come on, you know? We did not play Stairway to Heaven at the end. We did not, we do usually, but we did not. Student council also put on spirit week last week. And, you know, we've talked about it, kids just don't, at this age, just struggle getting into that stuff. So we've kind of talked about, is it the kind of the subject area we're doing? And Disney seemed to be the most popular thing to do, but not a ton of kids are doing it. So we're kind of looking at, you know, maybe some other things to get spirit back into the building. But, you know, that's also typical middle school. Nobody wants to get out of their lane, you know, so, but that's it.
Awesome, questions for John? I saw a couple of pictures of that dance. Most of them were just a whole bunch of boys sitting in chairs. All right, thank you. All right, Dr. Morris?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna try to go lightning round here because of a number of things I want to share with you and I haven't seen you in a while. We had our red ribbon week last week and we actually partnered with the National Guard and they did a flyover and our, yeah. And our students wore red and they were situated on the field as a ribbon and the helicopter flew over and took pictures and it came out great. Reports are that our school ribbon looked the best, so there's that. We also, Key Club hosted their haunted house last week and from what I understand, that was very popular. We have the conclusion of our fall sports season is upon us. The girls soccer game has started. I have not gotten a score update yet, but I'll let you know if I do. And our spirit team is competing in the state competition this weekend as well. We are hosting the Army Band next Wednesday. They're going to perform for our chorus and, and band students. And I gotta tell you, I remember when the Army Band came here, when I was here and it was amazing because they can really play, so looking forward to that. Hosted a college fair that was very successful. We also, Scott Thibodeau and Colleen McDonald were fortunate to partner with the state on a grant, on a program called Kids Rock. I think I had mentioned it last time. It was a two-part professional development and it was student, teachers were learning how to implement this curriculum where they teach students how to essentially cover contemporary music and do that in a contemporary kind of rock band setting. So our chorus room, our piano lab had a drum set and bases and bass amps and electric guitars and everything and it was great. And so Scott and Colleen are looking to put that in the program of studies for next year, hoping to, you know, augment their offerings that could help some of our current band students, but also try to pull in some other students that maybe aren't into the symphonic experience. So, and they'll do a great job. Speaking of that, Amy Parkinson is making her triumphant return as the drama club director with Percy Jackson and Lightning Thief and that will commence on November seventeenth. And we're very excited and the kids are thrilled to have her back. She does it all. We hosted a flu clinic today and also today we sent out some information to sending schools for a Pembroke Academy information night for all of our eighth graders who will be coming to us next year. So that is scheduled for December twelfth. And with that is also an invitation for them to come to a varsity basketball doubleheader in mid-January. And Freddie will work on acknowledging them at that and, you know, we'll have tickets for them. That'll be free. Through all of this, we are still continuing to go through the N E S C experience. We have had a handful of staff members who have gone to, gone on collaborative conference visits as visiting team members. And we've received some helpful feedback from them on some things that they've seen that we want to implement and anticipate. But quite frankly, the feedback, the general theme of all of the feedback is we're in a really good spot. There are things that we should do just to check off, you know, basically a quality of life things that will make the visit easier on the visiting team. But in terms of big picture things, we're, we're really are in a good spot. I would also just like to share that the Pembroke Academy administration defended their crown for the costume contests this year. We did Toy Story and Mr. Zamuda's inflatable Buzz Lightyear uniform was the talk of the town. So I have pictures I can show you later. And I just also wanted to give a thank you to everyone, really Patty, for all of her support over the past couple of weeks because it's been challenging for me and she's been great.
Thank you very much, questions for Dan? Okay, moving on. S A U board slash exec board.
So we met last Wednesday and approved the S A U budget. I believe the increase was one point nine percent over the year before. So I, I think they equate to like thirty-eight thousand dollars in that range right there. But it was passed and next meeting, I don't know when the next meeting is, sorry. Next week, okay.
All right, and there was a meeting of the renovation committee today?
Read my notes here. So we had a meeting at four at Hill School and I wrote a ton of notes, but they were talking about the existing conditions review, which they started. They've been working on, hope to have wrapped up shortly. They started meetings today with educational visioning, like a three-hour meeting. Some of the stuff they focused on was, which I found interesting, was just the group that was there, the top ten things that makes them unique and the top ten barriers that they're having. And then the other thing they talked about was community engagement. And then I wrote down a bunch of timelines. So they're hoping to have the ed design and concept development done by February of twenty-three. Conceptual design by spring of twenty-three. And then January twenty-four, the intent application would be due. And he explained that if that passes the first time, construction could start June of twenty twenty-five. If we need a second round, construction can still start June of twenty twenty-five. They did have the architectures and the engineers go through the building as it is. The building is safe, they didn't find any major issues, so that is a good thing. But something he said to be aware of in the reports that we're gonna get, like some things that are simple fixes may end up being really big fixes depending on changes with the code, like the most recent building codes. And their next meeting is January seventeenth at four P M. We have two school board meetings, January third and the seventeenth. And even though the seventeenth is a work meeting, what they're hoping to do, if we can, is come here and present their reports, maybe towards the beginning of the agenda and they could give us some information with Wendy on the seventeenth.
Sounds good.
And that's most of my notes. Sandy may have more, but it was a good meeting.
Question, yep?
Can I just go back one? I was confused on the last update about there being an S A U meeting next week because I thought it was a full S A U meeting and I just wanted to clarify, it's an executive committee meeting, right? Okay, thank you.
Why, I, Mike, yeah, that's what confused me because I thought it was area and not S A U. So there's two, five-thirty is the exec board and six is the A R E A.
Thanks, any questions or comments about the Hill School stuff, renovation committee? Okay, and we don't have budget on the list. I wasn't here last time, so we did have a initial M B C meeting back in October. Basically a review of C I P. I can't remember when they start up again. We talked about it at the meeting, but I don't think I have an email copy of that schedule. So I'm not sure when the first Thursday is, but it's, it'll be in the next couple of weeks. Tentative plan is the same as usual, that we will present at the last meeting before Christmas and then we'll have like four meetings after the holiday to work on the school stuff. We did get an ask about some COVID stuff, which was on the agenda later today. I was also asked to invite Ms. Gershah. The committee indicated that in times past, she would come once in a while and sort of give the five-thousand-foot view of some special ed stuff. There's a lot of special ed things that we, you know, we can't go into detail about and I can't give really any details about because I don't know about it. So they asked if she'd come and sort of just do a recap because it's been a few years. So we'll invite her and that would be after the first of the year. And I guess the other thing to mention is when Mr. Flurry came and talked to us about C I P, he mentioned a few big ticket items that were on the plan for this year. And I'm not sure that this is finalized, but the indication at this last meeting was that two of those, one being the sewer connect to Concord and the other being the six hundred thousand dollar for the D P W building downtown that's falling off the side of the hill are not going to be on the warrant this year. So that's a sort of major change to the town side. So I'll bring more information on that when I have it. And I think we're good to move to number six, if nobody's got questions. All right, you said you had a couple for consent?
A child gearing leave and a bus stop request.
Motion to approve the child gearing request?
Second.
I think if there's discussion on this one, we probably should take it to non-public. So I guess I'll ask, does anybody want to take this discussion to non-public and ask if the motion will be tabled? Okay, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Fantastic.
Motion to approve the bus stop request?
I'll second it.
Hey, any discussion on this one?
I, I'm, would like to get a little bit more information. Typically, we've not just, you know, automatically approved bus stop requests. Do you have any backup or, I mean, I, I read the request.
No, I think this request was mostly based upon medical need of the, of the child.
And Linda has no objection and she's in favor and.
She brought it forward, it was an apparent, well, I think that she spoke to the parent, but she's fully in support because of the specific needs of the student.
Okay, that satisfies me.
All right, then all in favor of approving the bus stop request, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? All right. Gifts and donations? Nope, okay. So we'll move on to number eight. If it's okay, I should have done this agenda review, but I'm wondering about rearranging these. I think that B is going to be short and I'm thinking that C, I'm not sure how long the budget presentations are going to be, but if anything has to drop for our, we have a time limit now. So anyway, I'd like to flip B up to the top if that's okay with you guys. Okay, so to give it a little preface, there is a state dashboard where you can see what COVID funds were allocated to districts, what's been spent and sort of that type of thing. It was brought up by one of the members of the M B C and they indicated that, you know, they'd want to discuss it at some point. So I asked Patty to sort of give us a, a little preview now of, you know, kind of where we're at and then we can dive into it more in-depth when we get deeper into budget season.
We are very unfortunate in the fact that we did not find an S A U fund grant manager. So the principals and I have spent a lot of quality time together trying to make this process easier. There were a lot of COVID grant funds, so we're calling them S R one, S R two and S R three. So three pots of money. And we have some pretty elaborate spreadsheets to try to talk through the different needs that he. And we have some pretty elaborate spreadsheets to try to talk through the different needs at each building and then come to consensus on, you know, what we're putting in for. So I think Dan started the initial spreadsheet and it just grew from there. I think the first round of COVID funds was released very early on and it was, that was when we were in panic mode. And it was Josh, get your hand on as many, you know, PVE supplies that you can. Ordered all the signage, so one way in the hallway, six feet apart, all of that initial, I call it, we were, when we were in sort of in panic mode. So we got a lot of that stuff with the first one. And the second one, we started kind of adding more staff, stipends for folks recognizing our COVID coordinators, our nurses, our custodians, our tech staff, not huge stipends, but just trying to acknowledge that work. We started buying a lot of technology pretty early on because we, we had students home and we needed to get devices into their hands. So our tech folks did an outstanding job getting that all up and running and delivered. And then with the third round, I had shared this, the survey results with you earlier on. We tried to really focus on student learning. We have one large Honeywell project that you've approved because of one thing that all schools around the state learned was that their HVAC systems maybe, you know, we were in really good shape thanks to Josh, but we did identify an area that we could improve our air, you know, air quality. So that's the S R 3, one of the significant projects. The others Wendy just referred to, we have some interventionists that we've hired and that's been really great because there's, there's never pots of money like that where we can bring in extra OT help and extra speech and, you know, behaviors, behavioral support, social emotional learning, all of those things that, that are always lacking, that we're really thankful to have. So we have gone through, the S R 1 grant actually closed September 30th. So we spent a lot of time making sure we spent every penny. And if there's anything we could back out of one of the other grants to, to get into the first grant, to make sure we spent that funding, we did that. So we will make use of our funds and you won't see Pembroke as returning maybe $100, I don't know, but it will be low. So we have still got our spreadsheet going and we have a few more. We have some more S R money. We have until the end of next year for the S R 3. So we're actually budgeted all but a couple of hundred thousand. So we're trying to be careful. The staffing takes up a lot of money. So whatever we have left, we do want to be judicious with. I will prepare, Andy asked me to prepare something a little bit more detailed for the budget committee so that they can hear about what we've done with our grant funds. So when I do that, I will certainly share it with the board, but wanted to just kind of give you a high view for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Cool, all right, we will jump into the budget stuff. Just a reminder.
Sorry, Andy, I'm a little slow to respond on the invitation for questions. Can you, or what are you doing? And if, if attention hasn't been turned to this yet, can you start to turn your attention and, and tell us the plan for when these funds run out? You know, I know that that, that's a, it's great to have all the extra money, but that's a problem when you have all the extra money is then you sometimes can become reliant on the stream. And then all of a sudden it goes away. And, you know, for example, you have these great interventionists and there's, the need sometimes doesn't just magically disappear when the money does. And so I think it would be wise for us to, you know, have some strategic planning ahead of the disappearance of the funds.
Yeah, thank you for that. We actually just had that conversation this week with the intervention and the math coach position that we lost years ago at Three Rivers. We now have that position for two years thanks to COVID funding. That's going to end after the end of next year and we're going to have to deal with that. You know, there will be items that we have to decide is, you know, are we going to put these in the budget? Or are these going to be, hey, we lost the funding and unfortunately we have to let this stuff go. Cause it is a good chunk of money. So it would have a huge impact on the budget if we tried to move everything into the budget, which we just won't be able to do. But thank you for that.
Okay, as far as the budget stuff tonight, just a quick note. So due to some staffing issues last year, we got the budget presented in a slightly different way than we had before. We got sort of what we call the building budgets first, and then we got the full budget at our following meeting. And I think at the time, everybody sort of agreed that that was nice because we could sort of focus more on the building stuff. So we're doing it the same way this year. So we'll have the principals tell us about their building budgets tonight. And then at our next meeting, we'll get a first look at the full budget. Oh, rock, paper, scissors? I guess we'll let Dr. Morris go first.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So I just have a, it's four pages, but it, it won't be too bad. I promise. I just wanted to highlight any, yeah, yeah. Some increases that we have and provide a little bit of context behind these. They are generally in order, so start with 11 hundreds. The first thing I'll mention is, as you may remember, we had a math position that we couldn't fill. And we've come close. We've even scheduled appointments with Patty for final interviews and then it just doesn't pan out. And that's been the case for a few years now with this position. So there are two positions that we are in need of for next year. And we feel like at this point, we can use that math position towards one of these two, hopefully. The two positions that we're looking at are an additional Spanish teacher. Our Spanish numbers, it's a good, it's a good thing, but our Spanish numbers have really grown quite a bit. And particularly our Spanish one numbers. And as you can imagine, the next year to drop will be Spanish two and so on and so forth. And so getting another world language teacher in that position would really be helpful. The other position, and I should mention with both of these, that they've put in for these for a few years, for two years. And they haven't gotten to this point. So it's, it's been a need that they've expressed and, you know, we're at a point where we probably, at this point, I need to bring it up to you as it's a need. The second is a case manager. We, we've needed a case manager. There's been an express need for this for a few years. And this year particularly, I've seen some, some needs with, with students that have come in. And I think post-COVID too. And so, you know, maybe Karen could speak a little bit more about that. But I, I just feel like those are two positions that I need to at least bring up to the board. So again, we have that math position we haven't filled. Be good for us to transition one of those into that, which would mean that net in one additional position to the budget. So moving on, unless anyone has questions, and yeah, please.
Students per case manager?
Students per case manager. Okay, so the justification, I asked for a justification for these positions. We have, our current special ed population is 130 and that's up from 117 last year. And we do have 26 that are listed to graduate as seniors. We have three that are receiving transition services. This gets more into where they are, so I don't want to get into that too much. I don't have a, I don't have a ratio for you on this, so. Yes, I believe that is eight. No.
Sure that it's an equitable split either because we do have, you would know, we do the special program. So if someone's running a program, they may have to case manage those students in their class.
Yeah, we have one that is skills program, one that is an alternative program. And, you know, their days are full. Any, any other questions on that one?
Yeah, concerning the math position, more importantly, well, not more important, but the, you know, I understand the need for these two positions, but that need doesn't go away just because you don't get candidates. So how are you handling?
So one of the ways that we felt we could handle that is by, you know, we have a few case managers currently that have some math background and have got integrated math before. And hopefully if we got a candidate that also had that, then we could work with them on offering math offerings for our special ed population. And that would take away some of the burden for the math. You know, in a perfect world, we'd be able to do that. That would be the hope anyway, when we post the position.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, that's probably the most high-leverage one. Substitutes, we just want to increase that line to align with what we've been spending in actuals the past few years. Science supplies, I will say in creating the budget, I noticed that the biggest increases on supplies were in science and in lumber, which kind of reflects our own personal life too, probably. But the, the increase is really in terms of prices and shipping across all vendors. And at the high school level, they are getting things that they're dissecting, they're getting, I mean, these are very specialized vendors that they've used for a long time. Infrastructure, this is a number I got from Josh Barubi. We need one server as well as additional access points. English books, if you remember, we didn't have English books funded from the budget last year. So this increase reflects that it is in the budget, but they are also looking to expand their book choices for students that are struggling in reading and provide some other options for them that would be of interest to them. Math books, we want to reinstate our statistics course and the former set of class textbooks is 10 years old, so.
Sorry, you're doing good on the lightning round pace here. Is the instructional materials trust fund something that can fund English books? Okay, thank you. And math books and science books and, yeah, okay, I'm good.
Great. The sci, yeah, yeah, please.
And is, you know, the, I mean, math, I guess, changes in the way you teach it, but are these books out of date or in bad condition?
Out of date, yeah, yeah. Yep. And with the science books, we need books, are actually the human bio lab books. Those are single-use and we have to use the same books that NHDI uses because we have that partnership with them. Continuing on with replacement, this was actually put in last year and we took it out. They need a classroom set of stools for rooms and they have high tables. So it's not like there are chairs and stools from other parts of the building that we can bring over there. So they're kind of specialized in that way. And that wasn't something I, I guess I didn't really appreciate that last year, so. But anyway, it is a need that they have. And in addition to that, so anyway, that was, I don't see it here, but that was to the tune of $4,000, that classroom set of stools. Table tops for art as well as some chairs for world language. Thank you. Replacement equipment. There are some machines, some exercise machines in the weight room that need to be replaced. And, you know, the weight room is used by our life studies department, but it's also used by our student athletes quite a bit, year-round. And that does get a fair amount of use. In addition to that, there, there is some, some instrument replacing happening here too. Okay, another high-leverage item, the replacement equipment line for computers. This is our Chromebook initiative. It increased. We're, we're asking for the same number of devices. I think the funding for that came from different places last year. And so that increase is reflected by, right now, it's all in the budget. I believe there was a, Patty, was there a tech trust or something last year that we utilized? Right. So anyway, the increase is because it's, right now, it's all in the budget. Feel free to, you know, interrupt at any moment. New equipment for music, additional steel pans, as well as soprano, saxophone, and alto flute. Those are instruments that are called auxiliary instruments, which are not instruments that a student would typically take up as a sole focus. But it's one of those things that they would take on in addition. It would be similar to like a flute player and a piccolo, so. New equipment for phys ed. That's, that's all listed there. New equipment for science. This goes into some microscopes that, that are needed, as well as a classroom set for a startup pack. They also are looking for some pieces of equipment called Raspberry Pi, which is a, I believe it's an AV piece of equipment used for programming. In addition to that, we have 12 toolkits for our pre-engineering class. That's, this is the first year we've run that and that's actually been really successful. Moving on to the 1,200 lines. Some additional money for workshop. We found that there's a, there are some increasing needs for some training to meet some of our, our student needs. We want to be able to provide that training for our paraprofessionals and our case managers.
I have a question about this. And I helped negotiate it, but I didn't memorize it. What is in, if anything, is in the paraprofessional union contract about workshop funding?
We researched that and there wasn't anything in that contract. There is in the teacher contract.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, an increase to special ed books. And part of that is, you know, just getting student books for grade-level curriculum to support math and English instruction. Okay, the following lines, these came from Jessica Bickford and Karen Gersha. So I may not have as much contextual information about these. We have an increase to our special ed summer program. It increased by $2,000. Our special ed contracted services, that was a decrease from 144,000 to 84,300.
Better? So I'll say it again. Occupational therapy, speech therapy, behavior specialists from any outside agencies. If students are in placement and need a contracted service that this placement doesn't provide, we would do that. It's, it varies depending on the students in any given year. But it's typically the professional services that come into our building from outside agencies.
So it would be on a smaller basis. It wouldn't be contracting a speech and language pathologist if we needed a full-time or part-time?
Well, it has been in the past. If we aren't able to hire someone, we would contract typically with Boothby. So that would appear there if we were short-staffed and couldn't hire our own staff member. But it's always our first priority to hire our own folks.
Okay.
I have a quick question after, on the special education books.
Okay. You want to ask it now?
Sure, well, yeah, my only question is, do we have like a process in place? Like, I certainly hope we're not waiting for budget season to approve like books for children on IEPs that should have them right now. Okay.
We, part of that is, you know, if, if there isn't money in that line, I can transfer money from a different line or if it exceeds a certain amount.
So this is to supplement what you guys have already?
Right, or anticipating needs for next year too.
Okay. Yeah, and, and sometimes they'll, you know, they'll find out, oh, the English department is teaching this course and... and we've got some struggling readers. So hey, we should order our own set of, you know, whatever.
Okay.
Novel it is at a lower reading level.
All right, thank you.
Okay, special ed summer, special placements. That was increased from 24,000 to 61,000. Special education special placements, that was an increase from 200,000 to 386,000.
Are those special placements, are those something that you might be looking for the special ed trust for?
I don't know the answer.
When we get to budget cuts, that's, so we typically put in the budget what we know that our needs will be. And then I think the past couple of years, that's what we've done. We've said, hey, you know, in order to make a cut, let's, you know, cut $100,000 off of the placement line. And then if we need it at the end of the year, we can go to the trust for that. And typically we haven't had to use the trust. We've been able to get by with what we have in the budget.
I mean, I, I kind of knew that. I just wanted to put it out there. Because it was a net of like plus 168,000 on those lines.
Right.
So my question with that, is that just for the high school or out of district?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. Yep. Special education summer transportation, that's an increase from 9,000 to 12,000. I think you'll see that in other parts of the budget, that transportation cost did increase. Okay, and then special ed transportation went from 126, 126,000 to 193,000, same thing. And then the last one for special ed, special ed transportation. Let me double check that line because that may be a different title. Okay, that last one, sorry, should be diagnostic services. And that's from 61,000 to 73,000. It's a typo. Any question on any of those other special ed lines? Okay.
On the special ed transportation. If we could see at some point a breakdown, how it's being used. Because that's a huge increase, even though, I mean, I know this transportation increases. That's a really large increase, so.
We can't necessarily give you the breakdown because it's a small population. So what I can just generally tell you is if we have a student placed out of district and it's, you know, either a Massachusetts school or one on the other side of the state, that transportation is going to be significantly higher. So it's not just our contract with a special ed bus in general. It's, it's also student specific. And the costs have gone up along with that. You're welcome.
Okay, the last ones I have, just an increase in the supply line for lumber for our wood shop. You know, lumber's kind of their curriculum. So that's just trying to keep, you know, everything in terms of the, the unit number the same, but anticipating that cost increase. And then for library books, just increasing that. Let me look at that because I don't believe that's an increase of 10,000. I think that is, the final line is 10,000 and it's an increase of 2,500. So let me just double check that quickly. But anyway, that would allow her to work on replacing some of her books that are in circulation because she's still, she, she did some cleaning out, but there are also books of popular titles that I know she's still missing from COVID. You know, so just trying to rebuild that collection too.
I just had a clarifying question. Is it primarily increasing the amount of books or is it replacing? Meaning, you know, getting rid of and replacing or is it really a combo?
It's a combination. With a lot of popular titles, they wear out. And, you know, in addition to that, there are new titles and, you know, so she wants to stay current on all of that. But, you know, also replace, have a replacement cycle for some of those other books.
Dan, I found that for you while you were looking. It's nine, row 912 and it, the total ask is 10,000. It's up 2,500.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll go to TRS.
Okay, I do not have a handout, so I apologize. I'm not as organized as my buddy. Oh, I can be specific.
John, if you don't have the row number, if you say the account number, I'll quickly find the row number.
I don't have the row number.
Yeah, that makes it easier if I can, so I'll look that up if you just go a little bit slower.
A little bit slower. First one's easy. 001, 1100, 110, 205, 000, which is salaries. Oh, that's two. As you know, a few years ago, we cut a fifth grade teacher. And we have, you know, we've kind of spread out kind of the workload. And while that's going okay, just to give you an idea, one of our fifth grade classes is sitting at 22. And it's a math class. And, you know, it's interesting that our, you know, our fifth grade has the highest class population, I mean, not overall, but because it's divided by four, we now have at least 18 in every class. And they're hitting 20. So I really, I, you know, when we lost that, I, we've done this before. I've played this game before and we lost it a number of years ago. We got it back and we cut it again. And every time it's like, oh, every time we do it, we're gonna come back and ask for it again. So that's on the table, yeah.
Mention the salaries aren't here yet. So in two weeks, Amber will be filling in all the blanks that aren't filled in. And one of them is that we're still going through the rosters and updating salaries. So she'll populate that when she presents to you in two weeks. The salaries are the very first thing in the budget. So starting on row 14, yep, it's blank, yep.
I guess, I don't know if you've been through, maybe we should do a quick. So when you look at the very first three, right, 14, 15, rows 14, 15 and 16, all look the same. If you look at the 1, 2, 3, 4th set of numbers there, the 104, anything that's 104 through the whole budget is going to be Hill, right? And then anything that's 205 is TRS and anything that's 306 is PA. So you'll see them all grouped together like that in lots of places.
The first three digits are 001, it's your Fund One budget. The second set, so the 11 hundreds are all regular education. So you'll see them also grouped by the second set of numbers. And then 12 hundreds are always special education. So as we go, that's also a little hint. We usually say just like 1100, 110 because that's the salary line.
We cheat, we just, we can just see our numbers, our, you know, so, you know, we're now working off this and it's, it's a little bit of a mind bender. 1100, 112, 205, 000, which is our subs. We had cut that back significantly last year, basically due to the lack of subs. Well, the good news is we have subs. And so, you know, we look to increase that just because of the availability and we may blow that out of the water. I don't know, but we just needed to increase that. 1100, 610, 205, 000, which is general supplies.
Hold on.
Yep.
Can we please do what Patty suggested, which is you go a little bit slower and then she gives us the, you know, line 116 or? Thank you.
General supplies, Patty.
That is row 121.
I'm sorry. 1100, 610, 205, 000. Is general supplies, it's an increase of $3,000. I can tell you right now, we are going through, it is the increase. We are just really going, paper is, I just got three quotes on paper and the cheapest we can find is like 45 to 48 dollars a case. You know, it's just, we're all dealing with it. Infrastructure, which is 1100, 612, 205, 055.
185.
Not unlike PA, that is a replacement server and additional access points, came from the tech department. Next is 1100, I lost my place. 1100, 737, 205, 000, which is a replacement furniture. I've been trying to get more replacement furniture for a while. To give you an idea with teacher desks, I have teacher desks that we brought from the village school when we moved into Three Rivers. Three Rivers is now 30 years old. So I'm slowly pecking away at it. But I still got a dozen or so, you know, and a teacher desk is not cheap. Plus any other classroom furniture that we need to replace that gets broken, things of that nature. Then next would be 1100, 738, 205, 055, it's computer replacement.
310.
That's an increase of 5,000 from last year. So it's basically the fourth year of a four-year plan. It's replacing, you know, technology in the building. It's not adding, it's replacing. You know, we do have a one-to-one, they don't, we don't send the equipment home, but they, they get used hard. We want to be able to keep up with that.
I have a question on that one. Love long-term planning, but does that mean if this is the fourth year of a four-year plan, you know, what's then the year after next year? Is that like starting again at year one? So it would be like a similar type expense? Or does that mean like no money expended because we finished the four-year plan and we can like do nothing for a little while?
No, we're not going to do nothing for a little while. It's really just finishing out a plan. To be honest with you, the plan got blown up because of COVID. And so we're really trying to, typically this would have been a much bigger number, to be honest with you. A significantly bigger number. And we've been able to reduce that because of COVID. However, you know, we have 325 kids using Chromebooks every day. You know, one of the reasons we don't send them home is because they don't come back. And if they do, sometimes they're pretty beat up, particularly in middle school. So we're really trying to, you know, we've got a pretty good system working, but we still spend a lot of time and energy repairing. Sometimes you can't repair them anymore and it, you know, it doesn't take long to go through that. That's just the Chromebooks. We've also got a bunch of equipment for staff to be able to teach, so.
I think it's worth noting on that one too, and John just said it, but it is Chromebooks. And it's something that, that I'll make sure to say when the public hearing and stuff coming around. A Chromebook is not a laptop. You know, if, if you've bought one for your kid at home, you know, it's a $150, $200 device. And it is not something that you're going to get eight or nine years out of, even at home with a responsible child. So, I mean, stretching them to four years is, is pretty, pretty good. I mean, these are not durable, well-supported devices, so.
A little bit, the intention when Josh, for those of you who've been on the board for a while, when Josh Barubi came, he did a great plan for a four-year replacement cycle. And we were trying to do 25% of our machines every year, so it was a nice stable number. But now, like John said, some years, all of a sudden, we have all this new technology over three years of COVID that we're expecting some one year that this is going to be a huge number. And this year, we didn't have to replace as many because we got all kinds of new computers with the grant. So it is, unfortunately, it's going to fluctuate and tech department is working really hard to try to come up with a new replacement cycle so that we have a, a good plan. But that's going to take some time because they have a lot of machines.
I mean, honestly, I'd recommend trying to put some money into some kind of fund. You know, because I think, well, I don't think, I know that, you know, a couple of televisions go and, you know, you're at five grand. You know, and so I think having that backup would be really good.
On televisions, they're touchscreen.
Touchscreen.
Everybody thinks we have like large-scale TVs in all of our classrooms. They replace it the whiteboard, so just so everyone knows.
Their projection TV. Learning panels, there you go. Okay, the next one would be 1112, well, I'm sorry, 1200, 114, 205. Which is, those are paraprofessional, I think it's listed as.
In the 4, yep, 406.
Need salaries.
And the salaries aren't in there yet, but.
I'm, you know, looking to add a couple more paras. As difficult it is to find, not unlike PA, we are over 70 identified students in the building now. It's the highest I can remember. And trying to meet those needs, you know, as well as we can, we're doing it. But the anticipation is that number is not going to go down. So I think we have to be thoughtful in what we're doing in the building. The next one is another special ed, 1200, 115, 205, 000, summer programming.
410.
And that's a small increase. It's a summer programming from 7,000 to 9,500, so a $2,500 increase. The next one should be right below that, which is 1200, 323, 205, 000, contracted services. Put that in because.
Hold on one second. 328, yep, 443.
Because that looks like good news. Last year we did 239 and change and projected as 115, decrease 124,000. Next one is 1200, 569, 205, 000. Another special ed, but those are placements. We had been.
473.
Oh, we had done 183,000. And we're moving to 314,000. I think on the budget, it's coded, there's a color coding that's, I guess that, what is that mustard? Orange and it says the decrease. I don't think that's a decrease. Wrong color.
So we, while we can't talk about specifics, you could probably draw your own conclusions. If you go back to contracted services and see that that number is down pretty much the same as our placements increased. So a contracted service is typically having an agency come into your building. Whereas a placement is when students need to attend a different school for their services.
Ask a quick question. Without specifics, just a quick general question. And I'm not going to pretend to be an expert whatsoever. I am not.
You are though.
And I know that, and I do know that we have great special ed staff. But have we ever thought about bringing in an inclusion specialist to see if we can cut down on some of these out of district placements with these kids leaving our district?
We had an inclusion facilitator for years, so we cut that position, I don't remember. It's been a number of years now. But with the addition, so Jessica Bickford, you met her. She's going to be taking Karen's place when she retires. She's actually visiting each of our buildings and this was something that was on her radar. It's like, you know, our numbers are up, so let's take a look at that. And, you know, sometimes there were extenuating circumstances that it's just not, if it's a safety issue or, you know. But she does want to take a look at that and she is going to each of our schools.
Okay.
There are, there are eyes on it. Yeah, thank you.
It's so important to note that the, the costs have increased significantly. You know, what hasn't, right?
Is, is the cost increase of services a point of information? Or does that make it, you know, more justifiable to have a staff person whose focus is inclusivity again, or both?
I want to hear from Jessica once she goes to all of our schools. But just knowing, I try to keep kind of updated with, with what's going on. And I think some of it is just the nature of the times and the severity of the issues that our students are dealing with. I'm anxious to kind of hear a report out, but, you know, when, I do ask, when a student leaves our district, I want to know, you know, why are, why are we not servicing the student? So I know that some of the newer placements have been pretty, they're, we've done everything we possibly can before we let, we don't want any of our students to leave our building. So people have been bending over backwards to prevent that from happening. So I don't think that's going to be the outcome, but I'm certainly open to it if it is.
Another one is a special ed, it's 1200, 641205031. I think we haven't had anything in that line for a while. This is an intervention kit. And quite honestly, we're looking at some other options. But we felt like the need, I think you're going to hear from all principals, the need for materials of kids that are significantly below grade level. And I don't like, grade level is not accurate, I'm sorry, it just really isn't all that accurate. But that's what people understand, significantly below, we need resources, you know, to help all of what's going on. There are a couple of other options I'm looking into, but I felt like I needed to get that in there if I couldn't get that other option. Then 1410, 110205000. This is more of an explanation.
Hold on one second.
Yep.
1410, 110. 658.
Those are co-curricular. We would like to remove spirit and move it to another line, which is other assignments, other assignment stipends, I think it's called. And I can explain it when we, I guess I can explain it, it doesn't really matter. We want to move that because spirit, we've been really struggling over the years to sustain. It doesn't make a lot of sense to try to keep something that we're not getting. It's hard to get coaches and kids, et cetera, et cetera. So we do have a need, we have an after-school supervisor. This is going to be a long way to get to a short end, I guess. But we have an after-school supervisor for athletics and co-curriculars. We'd like to combine that stipend with the cheerleading stipend and have somebody take over the athletic duties as an extra stipend. Right now, it's being done out of assistant principal's office. It's a lot of time. And you know, it needs to be, a lot of schools have that separated out. So it would be a stipend, we feel that that stipend, I think it'd be about $4,600, would be for the school year, and to schedule all the games, supervise the games, get all the officials, do all the transportation, do all the eligibility, you know, hire the coaches, there's a lot, and it's busy. And we felt like it's time to separate that. It used to be separated, to be honest with you, and we moved it into that position, and I think it's time to separate it again. So you'll see an increase in another line, but at the end of it, there's no increase. We're just moving around. The next line would be 1410, 22120500. 1410, 321205000.
664.
Did I get the right one there? That's the trainer. I think in the budget, it says $5,000, is that correct?
Yes.
That will be coming out. We do not use the trainer.
How long has that been in and how long have we not used the trainer?
I don't know, it hasn't been in very long. Couple of years.
I know it all washes out in the end, but.
But we put some of the athletic trainer salary in earmark some of it for Three Rivers, thinking that person may need to come over, participate more at the middle school level, and it hasn't happened, so we're just going to move it out of there.
The next would be 2123, 33020500, diagnostic services. Now, just pointing out, that's an increase of 7,000 from 175 to 182. Yeah. All right, the next is 2213, 641205000. 641, they're staff books, staff reads. This is really for staff development, I'm sorry.
872.
This is for staff development, for staff. As you know, we've been doing thoughtful classroom, and we have purchased books for them, and it's been very successful. You know, I'd like to be able to continue to do that. You know, and as you know, books aren't all that cheap, particularly that type of text. But it's been very successful, I'd like to be able to continue to do that for staff. The next line is 2490, 114205000. And that is, I forget the name of.
2490, 215?
114. 2490, 114. 205.
1109.
You'll see an increase of, I believe it's $2,400. That is the cheerleading stipend that was moved from the other line down to this line so that we can add the stipend of the school supervisor and spirit to come up with an athletic director. The notes do need to, have not been in there to reflect that. So there's, in effect, there's no increase, just moving and changing the titles. And I think the last one is 2725, 519205000.
28.
Again, that's field trips. You've seen this before. I do feel relatively strongly that if we are supporting educational field trips, and we are saying we're going to give and have these kids spend a week outside of school, that we should support it somehow. This is not a lot, considering the total amount of money that we're talking. This would help a little bit, a little bit with transportation. So what I have is $2,000 for the sixth-grade trip and $5,000 for eighth-grade trip. And we've always had kind of $1,000 per grade level, so it comes to $11,000. We have not been successful with this over the few years, and we keep cutting it out, but I keep bringing it back. Yes, $1,000 for per grade level for field trips, just general field trips. Then there's $2,000 for the sixth-grade trip and $5,000 for the eighth-grade trip. Specifically trying to target some of the transportation costs. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think that's it.
Okay, any questions?
For me, it's easier if you just use the middle numbers, so if you say like 110114.
I think I have the row number. I went through, so hopefully it all matches, but we'll try that.
Thank you.
If it doesn't, I know I was coding it over here as we were doing it. So we'll start off on row 21, which should be substitute salaries. Does that match the one you guys have?
Yep.
Okay. Same thing, kind of that John mentioned, we are able to get substitutes. So if you look, we're kind of on par with what we spent last year, kind of looking at it this year. So that was that increase as well. 110112104. 110112. The next line is number 67, 110431, that should be maintenance contracts. That's just an increase in our overages and toner costs that we anticipate coming in. We did a print study last year, but it's also a challenging year to do a print study. So we're kind of working through that right now. And we're monitoring it, which is great because we use PaperCut, so I get reports. And so we're monitoring it, so we have an ability to manage that. The next line is 96, general supplies, 110610. Again, this is just the general supply budget. As John mentioned, prices of everything are going up, so that's an increase there to make sure that we have all the necessary basic supplies. We do supply a lot for staff as well, or you know, things that come up throughout the year. That gives us that chance to support the classrooms or needs. Next line is 102, if you need me to slow down, just let me know. This one is supplies math, it's 110610104. One of the things, you can see kind of a significant increase to this one. We are really, through the work we're doing with our data and looking at interventions and learning loss and supporting students, we're really trying to do additional support in math. So we're looking at hands-on materials and student consumables to support the math instruction that we're really focusing on K4. So that would be a significant increase to that. The next line is 106, which is physical education. Physical education, we have a new PE teacher this year. She's come in and kind of audited what our supplies are and really talking with her as far as what she'd like to do for programming. She really wants to work on team sports and allowing students to play at the same time. So like, we have one set of goals, but we really don't want the kids to just be waiting for their turn so she can have consecutive games going on, which we really appreciate at recess that they are learning to play team sports. So she's very much supporting our social-emotional goals. We very much appreciate that. The next line would be 108, which is supplies for literacy. Similarly in line with our math, it's a lot of consumables. We use, there's a lot of journals, reading journals, writing journals that are specific to our literacy collaborative work that we do, as well as chart paper and markers, and it pretty much all adds up to support the instruction in the classroom. Next line is 183, which would be 110612. This is infrastructure, this is the same line we all received from Josh Berube. This is to replace access points. I think those were things that previously we were able to fund other places, and it would be putting it back currently in our replacement cycle for the infrastructure. Next line is 204. It would be books for literacy. We've done a lot of support through grants with that as well. We're looking at continuing building classroom libraries, new books, replacement. They get used every day, all day in the classroom, so making sure that we're able to keep up with the consumption in the classrooms. Next one is line 282. This one's new computer networking equipment. If you notice, it's a decrease. I just wanted to point that out because we were shifting that to the replacement cycle. When we sat down as a team to talk, we really feel like we're not adding anything new right now. We're really focusing on the replacement cycle. And when we get down there, you'll also see why we shifted it. The next line is line 293, which is replacement furniture and fixtures. We were able to do quite a bit through ESSER funds to help support the furniture in the classrooms. We are now looking at replacing rugs in grades two through four. A few years ago, all the K1, I think right after the merch happened that first year. So those are all nice and new. Our grades two through four, five years of a rug that the kids sit on every day for many hours a day is definitely something you would like to replace. So we're looking at supporting the bigger classroom, like meeting area rugs. Those are pretty expensive when you go to do the larger ones. And they are fire code.
Yep.
Absolutely fire code.
Josh will check the tag.
He saw that rug replacement, they're the fire code ones. Okay. I know.
Yeah.
Line 307, replacement equipment, computer, same boat as PA and TRS. That's a significant increase to keep up with the replacement cycle. We also shifted some of that new computer money into that line. So that's to make sure we're keeping up with our Chromebooks and switching out our older projectors that are end of life and things like that. We're moving to the touchscreen televisions, and they're on a cart, which for us is great because, as you'll hear eventually in our renovation, some classrooms only have one plug, or maybe two, and you have to be able to move the equipment around. It's been a challenge for us to set up our learning environments when you are dedicated to a plug in a random corner of a room. This allows flexibility, so that's been something that we've been really appreciative of. Next line is 408, summer programming. These are sped lines as well, so it's a lot of the similar conversation you've already had. This one's just a decrease in our summer programming, so I just wanted to note that. The next line is 439, contracted services. That's a significant decrease. You'll kind of see as we go through some of the other lines kind of where that might have shifted to. So next line is 463, summer placements. That was a significant increase for student support over the summer. The next line would be 469, which is our special placements. So you can kind of see the increase there. And if those three lines in combination, if you take a look at those. The next one to just take a look at is line 1403. Skip quite a bit to the end. Summer transportation. Yeah. Shift to the end. This is special education transportation over the summer for students to receive summer services. So I just wanted to point out the increase to that line. And then my last one, I guess I definitely had the shorter list today, was line 1411, special education transportation. Again, just pointing out the increase, the significant increase to that line as well. And that brings us down to Hill School.
Special education transportation within district, or is that including anybody that's?
Yeah, it's including. And to Jean's point where we can't get into specifics, I'm still going to ask Karen. She told me that the cost of transportation has skyrocketed. So I'm going to try to get, yeah, I'm going to try to get a handle from her. You know, could you give me an example of a cost from two years ago versus now? Because we have so many companies that we're trying to get transportation from, and the costs are, we're paying for that.
But also, if that was line 469, if outside placements increased, then the transportation costs are going to increase. Okay, any questions?
Overly identifying for us to get a percentage increase of outplacement population for the special education students. You know, like the population has increased by. You know, like the population has increased by five hundred percent or two hundred percent or, you know, the placements.
You're, it's, you're talking about a really small cell size. It would, it would be identifying.
Sorry, sorry. Is there a way to find out, like, I'm just curious, the past three years, like, a percentage, is there a percentage increase? Do you know what I mean? Like, I wanna help you, but the,
the numbers are so small.
Yeah. Sorry.
I guess the the increase in those numbers, like, I I know the number is small, but like, you know, if it's a, you know, if there's ten, one year and then fifteen, yeah, that kind of thing. If it's increasing and how it's increasing, just so we can see a trend, I guess.
Doubling.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, is it more than doubling? Is it less than doubling? Is it more than tripling? Is it less than tripling?
I will do my best to get you information, but if we're going from, you know, if I say a placement is two hundred and twenty thousand and we went from one kid to two kids, oh gee, we know who the second kid was and we, you know, that's the kind of thing that you really wanna be careful. So I'll try to get something from Karen that could give you some kind of a comparison without being identifying.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, just speaking for myself, but I bet I'm speaking for the board. We respect the limit that you're talking about completely. But at the same time, it seems like there's room for at least like a skosh more information. So just trying to find that sweet spot.
I, you know, it's just concerning, I think, you know, just looking at the increases um in this, in the special headlines here, you know, just the things that we glossed over was like a million bucks. So.
Thank you all for your initial hard work and I'm confident it's not done. Last but not least.
Last but not least.
I would like to just say that the girls soccer game was one to one with Bo with five minutes left, which means that the time stops there. If some of you may remember, we've been in this situation before. And I'm being told it's now two to one PA with two minutes left. So just to update the board. So to talk about my budget, I'm also gonna, I don't typically see the budget this way as well, but I'm gonna try and venture off of what Wendy did and go column for a column. Some of the fixed costs I tend to do, and then some of the fixed costs Amber types in off of her numbers just to give you an update. So I'm gonna start on my end, going to road twelve forty uh for the disposal service. And Patty, please correct me if I'm not speaking the right language. I am the F true. So twelve forty disposal service, we're gonna be up five hundred dollars at the Hill School. On road twelve forty-two, we're gonna be up seven hundred and twenty at the Three Rivers School. And road twelve forty-four, we're gonna be up thirty-five hundred at Pembroke Academy. Those are actual costs. We did just get our contract for the next three years um with Casella. We price this out with three companies. They are by far the cheapest, even though the price is up. The only difference with the price that could change our environmental fees and diesel surcharges were, which are out there in our world. We do try and add a little bit to those based off of what we are paying currently um per the month and go from there.
Excuse me. Does that include, do the schools recycle?
We do recycle. And actually, in this day and age, recycling costs us more than if we had just trash bins. But we feel it's very important to keep that recycling program going.
And what about composting?
We don't compost.
And when was the last time that any composting options were investigated?
Personally, I haven't in my time. I, to be honest, I would be very concerned and very worried about the amount of work to get to that point. Not to investigate what it would take, but to execute it. And then to make sure all the creatures and critters in in that whole system is going the way it needs to. But I personally have never investigated it. Uh, to the next line, twelve forty-nine, that's custodial supplies at the Hill School. So just generally, that's toilet paper, paper towel, soap, wax, just the general stuff we use daily. Um, we increased that five by five hundred dollars. On line twelve fifty-one at Three Rivers, we did five hundred dollars. And on line twelve fifty-three at PA, we did fourteen hundred and fifty dollars. Everything is up, um whether it's supplies or whether it's contractors. And we tended to go with a five percent rule, just to give you an understanding of where we came across those numbers.
Looks like we won.
PA won. We did, sorry for the interruption. Uh, the next line is natural gas. That sixty thousand dollars is a mistake. We will get the correct number for the next round of budget on, that's line twelve fifty-five. Um, but for line twelve fifty-eight and twelve fifty-nine, that's our our wood chips, natural gas. Uh, wood chips were up fifteen dollars a ton. Um, to put that in perspective, we've fluctuated up and down for the ten, eleven years we've had the wood chip plant. We've been as low as thirty-nine to forty dollars a ton, which I believe was last year, to fifty-five this year. That fifty-five dollar mark is our, what we paid the first year we had that wood chip plant. Um, so we hadn't used what we allocated in those funds um the last couple of years. So that fifteen dollars should equal fifteen thousand dollars and we added five thousand to each school for a total of ten thousand. Moving on. We'll go to row twelve seventy. This is contract repairs at Three Rivers. We added a hundred and fifty dollars, that's five percent. And twelve seventy-two, contract repairs at Pembroke Academy. We added three hundred and fifty dollars, that should be five percent. Um, moving on to twelve eighty-four. In twelve eighty-six, we added seventy-five to each of those lines. That's a five percent number. And fast forwarding to thirteen thirteen, we added a hundred and fifty dollars to the maintenance contracts of the Hill School. Row thirteen twenty-three, uh maintenance contracts to Pembroke Academy, we added two hundred dollars. And the next three are my big increases. Um, so these are the maintenance projects. These would be smaller scale, not necessarily C I P items or trust items, but sometimes could be looked at that way. I do always start by putting items into a project line when they're at this level and not the C I P level. And we move from there. Um, so line thirteen twenty-eight is a total of forty-two thousand, five hundred, which is an increase of seventeen thousand, five hundred. In that line, we did remove the asbestos abatements that we've been doing yearly. And that was that twenty-five thousand dollar figure um from last year and the years prior. Within that forty-two thousand, five hundred, we're looking to update server switches for our camera systems, fencing for the playground areas, door access controls to the main entrance vestibule and the kitchen exterior door. A Jace panel upgrade, which is our, for lack of better words, it's our server for our heating system that we have to have at the Hill School that allows us to see and control what we need to from our centralized can heating computer. And it's also to add some walkie-talkies to their infrastructure down there. At Three Rivers School uh for maintenance projects, we didn't put anything in last year. This year, we're asking for twenty-five thousand, six hundred. That's again for the switch. All three schools are are asked, we will be asking for those um throughout time. Just to give you history on that switch, we've robbed Josh Berube servers and switches. So we're trying to make up for for borrowed time on that. Um, it also involves a section of tree removal. You'll see this at PA as well. I would only put those in if if it's outside of what we normally do. So do we have some money in our budget for tree removal? Yes, specifically if we haven't used it and then emergency happens, because that that gets passed around per se. But this is a section at Three Rivers we know and Pembroke Academy we know we probably should get rid of. This also has door access control for the kitchen at Three Rivers. An outdoor classroom um for Three Rivers. So this would include some tables for outside of that new fitness area underneath a set of trees, which is really, would be a good learning environment. And lastly, for some countertops in the bathrooms, uh the countertops are original to the building and are way past their useful life. Moving on to Pembroke Academy, this is row thirteen thirty-four. Last year, we had thirty-five thousand dollars. That was just for our asbestos abatements. Um, our abatements are up. We still would ask to carry that money in this line for Pembroke Academy. We're just not able to abate as much as we could with that same dollar figure, which just prolongs it and just extends it. We're not in danger, there's nothing wrong, but we're also not gonna ask for the increase to do four rooms. We might only get two rooms per se. There's also a backflow preventer in this line. So a backflow preventer is is our main water into the building. Um, this is for the academic wing. That backflow is original to nineteen ninety-nine. We have a history of fixing it and it's time to replace it. Um, also new to this day and age, and Dr. Morris could talk more about this, but there's a line item in this maintenance project for vape sensors within the um bathrooms. There's also repointing of some brick in some masonry here we need to do. A server switch for the system, some tree removal, some countertops in their, the bathrooms here, which are again, as Three Rivers is, beyond useful life. And then multiply that by two and some AC replacements that we tend to ask for to get ahead of those.
I, there you go. I had a question on the AC replacements, are they um heat pumps?
They're window units. Moving on, we'll go to line thirteen forty. That's heat repairs at the Hill School uh for two hundred and fifty. That should be an increase of two hundred and fifty, that should be five percent. Continuing on to thirteen forty-four, which is plumbing and electrical repairs at the Hill School. That's a hundred and fifty, that's five percent. Moving forward to thirteen forty-eight, plumbing and electrical repairs to Pembroke Academy. Um, that number should be sixty-eight, twenty-five and not twenty-two thousand. And that would be an increase of three hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total of five percent. And we will have that corrected for the next budget. Moving down to rows thirteen fifty-four, thirteen fifty-six and thirteen fifty-nine, that's our snow removal. We've added two thousand to Hill, two thousand to Three Rivers, which are are priced pretty equally per storm and a little bit more to Pembroke Academy. In my time, eight, nine years that I've been playing with the numbers, this is our first um increase with a plow. And it's understandable, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a storm. Um, it's understandable that it's happened and truly it hasn't happened prior. So eight, nine years, seven, eight years, first increase. Fast forwarding to thirteen sixty-six, repairs to our contract services line, I call this our contract service line outside. So it's thirteen sixty-seven, this is repairs for our tractors in our our fleet and our moving equipment outside. Um, for two hundred and fifty, that's a five percent increase. Next, thirteen sixty-nine, exterior maintenance to Three Rivers. Oh, I'm sorry, I messed that last one up. Exterior maintenance to the Hill School was an increase of two hundred and fifty dollars on line thirteen sixty-seven. Line thirteen sixty-nine, it would be six twenty-five at Three Rivers. And thirteen seventy-one for PA for nine hundred and fifty dollars. Those are all our services that are provided outside. So that could be painting of the parking lots, cleaning of the catch basins per se. Moving on, our grounds material line on thirteen seventy-three is an increase of a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Our grounds materials at thirteen seventy-five is an increase of two hundred and fifty dollars. Our thirteen seventy-eight, our grounds materials for PA is an increase of eight hundred dollars, that's five percent. Lines thirteen eighty is our parts and supplies for our, yeah.
I, I had a question about the um fields maintenance and the fertilizer. Can you, just back in the envelope, um guesstimate about how much of that is the fertilizer?
Yeah, I mean, fertilizers way up, but.
You mean like half, like?
It's not half. I, I would wanna see my numbers, but it's not half.
Okay, that's helpful.
A lot of our material line though is fertilizer and paint for those fields.
Okay.
And then you include um stuff like beautification out there per se.
Has the district ever considered organic turf management?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
And just to go on that line, we'll talk minor league baseball. And it's pretty impressive. The Fisher Cats are the only minor league baseball doing organic turf management, just to put that in perspective. And yes, it's phenomenal. And also on that, we don't do the pesticides. So any true pesticide other than a typical field fertilizer, we don't do at this point in time. It's cheaper, it's more cost effective. And quite honestly, it's it's safer to let the professional do it as opposed to what it would take for us to A, have someone licensed to maintain that and then to actually get it done. Uh, so moving on, thirteen eighty, equipment, parts and supplies. So this is all the items that maintain that stuff. Um, we're up a hundred and fifty, five percent. And lastly, gasoline. It's way up. We kind of tried to take our monthly bill in in work off of that. And that was an increase of five hundred dollars too, for a total of six thousand. And that's it. I know that's kind of choppy, please forgive me. Did my best off of reading off of this.
Delay. Um, I had another question, which is, um, I think I saw the electricity costs are blank still. Yeah, who, who fills those in? And does the school district, um, what's the situation with the school district purchasing energy or purchasing from the default uh provider?
So Amber fills those in. That's just historically been one of the ones she um fills in and it's grayed out by the time I get it. Uh, we are locked into a contract um that we did get in the height of COVID. So we did lock in very low. So we're not seeing as much of a spike right now. Unfortunately, we did miss a line. It was just, it was a account number. We have tons of of account numbers for electricity. It was historically missed and we didn't catch it till this year. And that's one of the bigger lines at PA. So we are gonna see some sort of a spike with the fluctuation with that. But the majority of our gas in our electric lines were locked into through um into twenty twenty-four. So we're not seeing as much as we might be seeing at home per se. Other questions?
Any questions for Josh?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So anywhere that there's a dash, there's going to be a number put in there. Where there's not going to be an increase, does it say a dollar?
Won't be a number everywhere there's a dash, because we're zeroing out some lines. So if you see a line that has little to no, so let's go to line 284. Just because I pulled open to that one. If, if there's an actual of zero. And then a voted of a dollar, actual zero, voted of a dollar. We're going to zero those lines out because clearly we don't need them and we're not using them. And you have, if you have a dollar, you have to keep the line open. So if we zero it for three years, which is pain, then we can delete the line. So that's what we're doing in some of those, but they're pretty easily identified because there's hardly any numbers in there over the past several years. Anywhere that there's historically numbers and now you see a blank, those will be numbers that Amber fills in.
Maybe a different way to get at the same question is, can you just remind us the timing? Of when we're going to get the completely filled in budget?
Sure, the goal is in two weeks, so Amber will be here in two weeks. And she will go through a similar presentation and highlight the increases. She'll have all the, the principals have received the rosters to verify all the staff. It's gone back for correction and so she'll populate the salary numbers. She'll give you her estimates for health insurance, right now they're just estimates until we get the final number, so. It should hopefully, unless there's a glitch or something's missing, be completely filled in in two weeks. And then we will go through the revision process. So at this point. You know, sometimes we've come to you and said, okay, well, admin has gone through and cut a bunch of stuff. This year, some of it for, for time-saving purposes, we wanted to get this in your hands. So we haven't really gone through. Significant cuts to the budget, it's pretty much, here's what we need, knowing that we're, as a group, we're going to. Obviously, there's some pretty significant increases without it even being filled in. So we'll go through that process and have to make some tough decisions with trust funds and cuts and all that.
I guess another way to say sort of the same thing too is looking at like, so if you go through. You'll find subtotals for sections like line 94, and those are pretty much worthless right now. Because they just, they're not adding everything up.
Can I just make a quick comment that I find kind of confusing? I get the dashed lines because salaries need to be put in there. But in some places in the document. The difference is left blank, but in some places it shows, oh, we're going to save $405,000. So if you look like a school resource officer and like the bus stuff. It's showing that it's a decrease of thousands of dollars, that's not true.
Right.
But in other places, we kept the little brown thing with no dollar amount, do you get what I'm saying?
Yes.
So that's kind of confusing.
Yeah, so Amber will, when she finished, this is a really rough draft. So she should fix all the formulas, you'll see where the dashes are going to stay, dashes are zeroed out and the differences and the colors. Yeah.
I was like, oh, we're not going to have that, oh, we're not going to have that, but then other places it was blank.
Yeah, it's, it's because she hasn't gone through it, yeah. And, but I need, that's the kind of detailed review we need because there's so many lines in here. Once she does fill it in, if you find those things, speak up so that we can have it as clean as possible. The next go around.
Want to remind you that I will not be here. On the 15th. But I will. Hopefully it will be able to be recorded because I want to go through it.
Yeah, and. For anybody, I guess, obviously, you know, not breaking meeting rules and having more than three of us at the same time. We have sort of broken off before and done, I know Jean's come over to my house and we've. During COVID, when we were, we did it in the garage with masks on and like. You know, over the next couple of months, if there, if you want to deep dive, you know, we can, you know, team up and, and dive into some sections and whatever we need to do. It was.
And any support that we can give you, if you're struggling, please call me, I don't mind walking through when it's new. I still have a hard time sometimes and I've been doing this for a long time, so it is, there are a lot of account lines and a lot to figure out, so.
Can I make an ask for next time, and I know that you're all very busy with this stuff, so I don't, I don't think it's big. I would like to get a sense of, or, or put some attention on. Rate of pay for our non-union PR, non-Paris, not teachers, but like custodial kitchen, stuff like that. I'm concerned that. Those numbers are not going up and that we're losing people.
When we go through the salary increases, we will review that, I'm not sure that Amber will have those charts done for the next time. But I do know, we spoke into the food service director and she has a proposal because those salaries are extremely low. Last year, we did make a concerted effort to do some increases. Front office staff, we tried to, they were kind of all over the place, support staff in the schools. And also Josh's custodians need to be looked at, so we are working on that, I don't know if it'll be here in two weeks, but it's a priority.
As long, yeah, as long as it's on the radar.
I share that concern, I think the, just to say out loud, the value of retention is very large.
Okay, any other questions, comments on the budget information that we've received tonight? That it wasn't enough.
Yes, I have an additional comment, which is, it's a very impressive presentation that I think furthers the excellence in our school district and I'm really excited for it.
Yeah, and another thanks to all the administrators and, and Josh. You know, I know that the NBC loves to see the notes that are in here, so that's always helpful. And yeah, hopefully we can have a productive season, I think it's going to be. Obviously a tough year with inflation and everything else that's going on. So, you know, as much information, we can be upfront and transparent and, and ask for what we need. It's good. Okay, so it being 8:30. Do we want to skip 8C for now and try to get some policy done or? Okay. I think it was nine, I think it's nine. Pretty sure nine is the.
I, I would like us to make. At least this much project. Did I miss the board goals document in our drive?
There's a separate folder for goals.
I think she put it there after the last meeting. Your drive is, I don't know, it's like ghosts in your.
Yeah, so I mean, we can certainly open up if there's any, I didn't plan anything to discuss for more goals tonight, only partly because. Presenting a, a budget that helps the students and the kids is one of those things and that was kind of the focus of the night. So that's kind of where I left it, but if anybody has input on that topic.
I, I think to a certain extent, we might want to consider. How much, so I'm a big believer in like not letting the good enough get in, or not letting the perfect get in the way of the good enough. And, and maybe we should just kind of like be open to running a little bit with what we have. And not. I mean, if we have time at some time to fill in objectives, that would be wonderful, I'm all for that. I'm not saying we should give up on that. But I think that we just worked on goal one. The Pembroke School Board will prepare a responsible student first budget, blah, blah, blah. And so it begs the question to me now, looking at a cell in this Excel document for November 2022 update. So whose job now is it to type something in that? You know, are we asking Sandy to do something with that? Are one of, I'm like, I don't even want to say it out loud, Sandy. So at least if we can kind of make some process progress tonight and, and figure out like, how are we doing this?
Well, not to volunteer people. But Stacy and Melanie sort of came up with the, if one of you wants to at least give it a shot and then we can kind of talk about it next time and it, to see if everybody's. Happy with the types of comments that were provided or if we want more or less or whatever.
I'm happy to take a shot at that. That would be great. I've been meeting in meetings since four, so that would be awesome, thank you.
Awesome, and, and I'm, I'm satisfied with that if that's all we do for tonight. I just, I feel real strongly that we should just at least touch on this, you know?
Could we do like a, Andy, could we do like a, this thing keeps going down. Can we do like a time limit, like we'll spend like six, seven minutes and just run through them and add some notes or something? Just so Jean can, Jean and I can quickly give a brief overview of those and we still have it on public, just so it doesn't go too long?
Policy.
The policy.
Can we?
Go ahead, Jean.
See, I thought I was losing my mind because I went into the policy and I believe we already discussed everything previously.
We did take a, look at them last time.
Melanie. I called Melanie, I asked her if I was indeed losing my mind and she said, no, we did talk about these, so I think they should be on like second reading.
Yeah, I think, I think Ashley was feeling badly that she didn't get the updates and the references off. So she wasn't sure if she should move them forward, but I agree with you that since they were brought up. Awesome, thank you, so yeah, we, so we can. We can make note in the minutes that the policies were actually on a second reading and next time they'll be on a third. If that makes sense.
Sounds good. I mean, they can sit, yeah, if, if, I would say, if you, if there's minor things, get rid of these guys. And if we have time next time, depending on how the broader budget discussion goes, we can take action on things. But if you have ones you have particular concerns on, they can sit another meeting. And so that you can be here and express your concerns. Okay, I, I think we're gone to number 10, but I want to make sure everybody's on board with that first. Okay, so number 10 is our next public comment section, so we've got another 15 minutes. If there's anybody here, our only guest left, so move on. Number 11, I don't think we have any informational.
I do. Quick, we are having some significant, significant issues with our steamer unit at Pembroke Academy. I know Josh is aware and our new food service director is aware that she will need to get three quotes on that. But once that comes, we'll need to decide if we're going to take that out of the budget or out of the equipment trust fund. And information will be forthcoming, I just didn't want it to surprise you.
Thank you. So that brings us to number 12, so the board has need to go into non-public session in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 91-HA:3. Roman numeral two, small letter c, which is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. On a roll call, vote to enter non-public at 8:35 PM. Stacy. Amy.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Melanie.
Yes.
And I'm a S, we'll take a second.